Mac and cheese? From Chick-fil-A, it's really good.
What is Chick-fil-A mac and cheese? I haven't tried it.
Chick-fil-A's chicken noodle soups are good, like if you're sick.
Who goes there?
Yeah, they're delicious. If you're sick.
Yeah, two yellow labs.
Two yellow labs?
One was kinda, just kinda tanned a little bit.
There are restrictions on what our working group talks about. Yeah, like in the six o'clock meeting.
So my youngest daughter's name is Liberty. And so we named this dog Belle.
Okay.
And I call it dumbbell all the time.
I call it poopalata.
And I can't, I don't like walking around saying that doo-doo dogs.
Well, I developed a new Olympic sport. I got tired of walking the yard. So I'd get on my John Deere tractor and hold the shovel. And just scoop it up and throw it to the bucket. Kept mowing. Called poop scooping.
Yeah, and so, like, the documents that went out for this week, one of them.
My new Olympic sport.
Questions about, because I've seen some things for this specific topic, but I wanted to. Okay.
Or email me.
Okay.
Always when you're reviewing. Yeah, this is, so these are, Liam apologized, he was a little slow on this. These are Liam's comments for tonight, and then we'll, do you want to go over the? Well, let's start with this one, actually should be pretty fast, yeah.
And then we can go back.
Then we'll talk about your noise piece, I have that ready to go, and then we can.
Yes, and then, yeah, and then if we've got any time, a little bit about even the condition of yours, I've done some reading on that.
Oh, good, okay. Yeah, this was top priority, so let's see. So, and I apologize, I didn't forward this out to you, but you had to open it to see it, so I didn't want people to just think there was no comments, so.
I put some comments in there today, too.
Yes, I saw those two. Okay, let's go through Liam's comments.
No, I agree.
Then yours, because yours were just grant, like, just wording comments, I read. Okay, so he changed a little bit. So this is in material to the substance of the ordinance, but I'm wondering if you want to have a different, more attractive name. He suggested independent living zone, senior housing residential zone, senior independent residential zone, or something like that, it doesn't matter, just throwing it out. Was his, um, his comment. Then we have a couple grammar errors, and then he added in the age restriction portion, and added the state and federal law stuff, and he said, as we discussed earlier, eighty percent is a minimum. There would, this would be addressed in the development agreement, but we should make it clear upfront, just in case. So really, it was pretty clean, Darren, good job.
Based on that, twenty percent could be younger people.
Correct.
Does the state law say we have to allow that twenty percent?
Yes, correct. Yeah. Yep, so in accordance with applicable state and federal laws, this zoning requires a minimum of eighty percent of the occupied units to accompany, be accompanied at least by one person who is fifty-five or older. So, that's where we don't have any say in that part. But other than that, I think we did really good.
Yeah.
The other one's just a little syntax change, there's nothing.
Yep.
The title of it was just a general throw.
Yeah, that was.
So, West Haven just says fifty-five plus patio home residential zone, or something like that.
He likes the word independent. I have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't, I think that's restrictive, because these people may or may not be independent, somebody else may be paying.
Or what's the classification of independent, really?
It just seems to me you just open up Pandora's box for a lot of other questions.
I like this second one.
I don't mind. I was gonna say, I like, no.
I like the second one.
The senior housing.
Senior housing.
I like that.
Yeah, and then let them read it to find out.
I don't mind the fifty-five and older, I mean, fifty-five is not that old.
It certainly isn't.
I feel like I'm creeping right up on it.
It just happened yesterday.
I'm fine, if you guys want to change the name.
I like the senior housing residential.
I like that, okay, let's change it. So in tonight's meeting, whoever may move this forward, just add that, uh, to be changed. Perfect, okay, I think other than that, super clean.
Do we want to keep the HOA as a requirement, especially where we have a code enforcement?
Well, it says are, um, but are not limited to the following, these items included in the, in the development agreement include but are not limited to.
Typically.
Oh, that means it has to be.
It'll be discussed during the, during the development review base, whether there's an HOA or not.
I mean, I'd be surprised if any developer comes in not wanting.
This list includes all of these, and there may be more.
That's true. Yeah, I included, so on HOA, they have to say, yes, we are, or no, we're not, it has to be in the residential.
Well, yeah, I guess you could look at it that way, like, hey, the development agreement has to address it, whether there is or isn't one. I'm okay with that, then.
Yeah, the only other change I looked at, the primary one was under the development agreement. I just put the, uh, needs to be approved by the Far West City Council upon recommendation of the, uh, Far West Planning Commission.
So how will this work where the planning commissioner, there's gonna be a subdivision, this will be a subdivision?
Yeah.
So.
So then it will go to the. And it'll go to the.
The agreement, the development agreement will.
Yeah, that's true, development agreements have to be.
And that's why I changed it, it's under development agreement. Because we can't, based off of that training I just took, that two hours thing.
Plus of me of one?
Yeah. Want to be very specific. The, the, uh, the mayor and council or the administrative people that can approve things, we just recommend.
Okay, let's, let's talk about the subdivision, new change in subdivision. So it goes before the planning commission.
Correct.
Not the city council.
Right.
If we have trouble with it, it has to come back to the planning commission.
Agreed.
Pro, preliminary.
We don't do preliminary. No, he's not just, he's talking about it, yeah.
You know, I, what I'm talking about is just the process.
Yeah, you're right.
So, so we, we have, we do have depot on the preliminary, and we have a veto basically on the preliminary, we have.
Or you need to come back.
For the subdivision.
Right, in other words, they have made the code to us multiple times.
For the subdivision.
We don't stamp the final.
For the subdivision.
Yes.
I'm talking about the development agreement.
Right, he's, he's just reviewing what the new, new stuff is.
I'm saying not just one case where we do.
Right.
Make the decision.
Correct.
That's the only reason I'm saying that.
Yeah, and then final goes to the new committee.
Basically, every other thing in the code, it always says, we make a recommendation to the city council.
Right, and that's why, that's the only thing.
So that's why this is a little bit unnerving to me.
Well, and we can change it, we could change it, too, it almost must be approved.
There's the verbiage right there.
And most development.
It's not coming for us, we gotta get the A and A before it goes to the city council, that's what that's.
Well, and the hard part is, we're, we're part of A through F, in the sense, not the physical agreement, but we are part of how this will lay out and what the requirements are, so it's hard to take us out completely.
There's like difference between the subdivision and the development agreement.
Yeah, they're different, so different, so you'll have a full agreement. Yeah.
Different end process.
Yeah, because the development agreement still has to come before you.
That's still a legislative body.
That must be approved by Far West City Planning Commission and City Council prior to.
That's why I put that under, in that red.
We still have to approve it, though, it still has to, the development agreement. Okay.
We have the recommendation to approve it or deny it.
Do we approve it, or do we recommend it?
We recommend approval, the city council is a legislative body, has to approve it.
So division?
No, the development agreement.
Development agreement.
Development agreement.
That's, I think it's still recommended.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
I'm trying to agree with that.
Well, and I think Liam's just reading it as an overall, because us recommending it is the same as approving it. Because when we look at our actual agenda, it says recommend approval to city council. So we're recommending to.
Our approval is a recommendation to city council. It's not either or, it's, it's, it's planning commission and city council.
You have to get both approvals in order to do it.
If the attorney didn't have heartburn, no.
Sure.
I'm fine with it.
I just changed, the only reason I changed it was, oh, it was more consistent with the ordinances that we consistently have. So that's the only reason.
I think if we do change the title to, um, senior housing residential zone, so it would be the purpose of the, of the.
Oh, yeah, we did name.
Senior housing residential zone is to provide a single-family empty nest type housing that is affordable and attractive for adults fifty-five and plus.
You do have to change that statement.
Yeah, you would have, you would have to add that fifty-five and plus after the adults.
Yeah, and I don't know that we need necessarily empty nest.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be empty nest, but you could take that, that's what Greg was putting in his, but we should add the fifty-five. For adults.
They don't want, they don't want kids there, it's kind of the whole.
There's twenty percent, twenty percent of the house, you can have kids.
But still.
Well, it's all of them.
So you can't eliminate kids.
All of them could have kids.
Right.
They could, as long as one person's older. So the fifty-five and older is in the age restriction part, too.
Right.
So, because that gets added at the end, so you're saying empty nest type house, da-da-da-da-da, uh, same age group, so where am I adding lifestyle activity? Attractive for adults fifty-five and older.
Seeking to live in a community with others of the same age group.
So we can say it like this, any fifty-five plus.
Just because it makes more sense, then.
Okay, seeking to live in a community with others in the same age group, okay, perfect, or active lifestyle. Okay, so the only thing we didn't settle on is the development agreement piece.
That's our list, though, what, what do you check, what do you?
Well, I'm just saying, in the recommendation, we didn't settle on, so the development agreement piece about changing it to recommendation from planning commission, and then approval through city council, or do we just leave it?
It, it.
I think.
It is inconsistent with the language elsewhere, that had been involved with the attorney, so, what do you, what do you say?
I would, I just. I was just trying to change this a little more consistent with the other, other parts of the ordinance.
And you're gonna have to update this again, where it says in the development agreement, any fifty-five plus residential patio home development.
Oh, that's right.
Or.
Because that's what we're doing.
We're not gonna change it to senior housing.
You have to rewrite the first sentence.
It's not as, they're not talking about the zone, they're talking about the development. Good catch, though.
That's.
All right.
So, we're changing the title, rewriting the first sentence to accommodate that.
Correct.
Adding Liam's age.
Age restrictions.
And what else?
That's it. And then the, just the two grammar things.
Well, yeah.
That's it. I think it's great. Do we all feel comfortable that it's still on the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is.
Someone needs my notes, I can.
I'm, I'm comfortable that we better not delay it anymore.
I like it. Okay.
Are we making decisions, do you know that updating the report has to be?
Yes.
Okay, if we're all good with that.
I'll make the changes.
Okay, you, I'll send you this, he has it in red, so you can just go in and accept it. Okay, I'll do that right now before I forget.
Not a serious.
And then, tonight is not, we don't need a public hearing, because we already did it for some reason.
Otherwise, let's say you would probably have to read to the public, changing that sentence, because what it's seeing from.
Let me forward that to you before I. Okay, if we want to move on to,
Noise.
Yeah, noise. You should have that. The funny part is, speaking of noise stuff, I can't remember what city I was looking at, but they do not allow roosters at all.
It varies from two cities, don't restrict them at all.
Is it North Dog? I think it's North Dog.
And one said, no roosters at all, and then it varied from, you have to be a half acre, eight year, three acres. So i- if you look at that, you end up walking away with, like, there is no consensus.
Right, I guess that's true, I was like, oh, we eliminated a mall.
Hey, how come I can't mow my lawn at one o'clock in the morning here?
The rooster somehow escaped.
I mean, escape, but the funny part is, I've never heard a rooster, Saturday morning, I heard roosters everywhere. It's like, oh, shoot, I'm becoming keen to them.
We want to talk about this again?
Oh, yeah, go for it, well, yeah, we're gonna talk about it.
Well, a- as we discussed before, you've got, by the way, my own personal experience is I've been next door to a person that's had roosters and have never heard. So, the gist of what we have heard is there are good roosters and bad roosters. There are roosters that are placed in musician where they make noise and neighbor hears them, and there's other roosters that are howls such that the neighbors don't hear.
Yep.
Given all of that, where we ended up last time is, is it fair to eliminate the good citizen roosters?
Right.
Because of the bad citizen roosters? And I thought our consensus was, no, that doesn't seem reasonable. So what we're doing is saying, okay, what is it that bothers the neighbors about roosters? And what bothers them, I don't think is that they are pretty birds, what bothers them is they make noise.
And I think some people don't mind the sound of roosters, so then it just depends on your neighbors.
Well, and how often they crow, too, there's some of them that go all the time.
Yeah, and, and, and clearly, all roosters are not created equal, okay? And if, if they're, if they're in some type of a coop, particularly a low-hung coop, then they're not crowing at all. So, what we decided to do last time is, okay, let's not say you can't have roosters. Let's say if your roosters create a noise nuisance, it's against the city ordinance. That's not any different than, you can have a dog, if your dog behaves, if your dog's yapping all the time and it's bothering your neighbors, then you are a violation of the city ordinance. To me, there's an absolute parallel between those two. So what I did, when I changed the ordinance, I just took the exact verbiage for roosters and repeated it, and I did add peacocks or other fowl, just to make sure that they're more inclusive. And it says the very same thing, the keeping of any rooster, peacocks, or other fowl which by causing frequent or long continued noise shall disturb comfort and repose of any person in the vicinity.
So that means I could blast those magpies out of the sky, right?
Well, that, I'm an A B ecologist, so I'll tell you a little bit about that. Yes, you may do that, the city of Far West will not do anything about it, but the Fish and Wildlife Service, which is an agency of the federal government, will do plenty about it. Because they're a micro bird, checked by federal law, okay?
Just like rattlesnakes.
Just, yeah, and a lot of others.
That's stupid.
So that seemed to be a reasonable source.
I agree.
Okay?
Yeah.
And the fact that we have a little bit more teeth than code enforcement that we had in the past.
Yeah.
I think what you're gonna find is there're gonna be a lot of people that have roosters and their neighbors don't say anything.
I like the other, I like the other foul part of it.
Using the law.
Sure.
Gets to it.
The other foul covers like pheasants, people go, do pheasants, pigeons.
And I put foul.
Oh, that's what I say, that's why I like, I like that.
That was their intention.
Yeah, I like that, so.
Well, and Liam did review it and said it looked great, and agreed where it went, and we didn't need to hold another public hearing, we were all good.
Okay. So that's, that was the rationale behind that.
Looks great.
So, that's, that's it with that.
Okay, that piece, okay, well, I thought the fifty-five and older was gonna take the whole time here, so, do we want, we have a couple options. Do we want to go to the A1, A1R stuff, or?
We can go there briefly.
Okay.
We can go there briefly, but since it's been tabled, and they called for a joint session.
Oh, yeah, that's true, we need to, oh, yeah, there was something else we needed to talk about.
I would like to make a couple of observations since I was.
Okay, yeah. Well, and actually, can we spend a couple minutes, since you're here especially?
Yeah.
Oh. Is it regarded to the A1 stuff?
Not specifically.
Okay, well, it would be, if we can spend, I only want to spend ten till six-thirty on this, I don't want to take the whole thing. But can we have a brief history of how this whole A1R stuff went down?
Yeah.
I talked to, is her name Jill? At the city council meeting, and I, I'm trying to put the pieces together.
Okay.
So, if I get the history, that'd be great.
Unfortunately, Lao Earl isn't here.
You want me to give the?
Yeah, give the Lao Earl piece of this.
I'll go to the point where I handed it off to Luke.
Okay, that's what I want to know.
You tell him about that part, it's super.
Like, why they originally came in, and how they got stuck where they are.
So, um, the bird property, they have, uh, basically, they have a greenhouse. So I think it's approximately ten years ago, and came in for a residential business. Okay, and the city council granted that with, you know, this, at the time, they were saying they were growing these to sell or use in their landscaping business, I don't remember all the exact wording, but, you know, it was something along those lines.
Yeah.
Well, over the years, um, basically, they became successful and grown a bit. And, um, then they put up a sign, and that's what alerted someone to the fact that it was no longer a home business.
Okay.
And so.
So is that what started it all?
I got an official written.
Complaint.
Complaint.
Okay, so it's a sign.
So that's how we started that, I went and had a conversation with them, and they basically told me their desire to, you know, they want to do this, and I shared with them that I, I personally think that, um, this is something, and I think you guys have all heard me over a couple of times, that this is something we should be able to allow within Far West, to encourage agricultural use of people's property, and, you know, and I, too, at the time, thought that the agribusiness might be a solution. That's, that was my thought, is because maybe it's businesses, agriculture and business.
Well, and I guess, that's my next question.
And, and that's, that's how we, you know, started this, and then.
Because didn't they, then they came in because they wanted to rezone for the ag business, right?
No, they wanted to zone for A1.
They, they wanted to change, they had to, some of the property was still zone R115, and do any of this regardless of what the solution.
It had to be one.
They need the A1, they needed the A.
Okay, so that then they could go ag business.
Then they could do what, it's more of an agricultural whatever use.
Okay.
There's ag business, or, and then, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we kind of discussed, maybe it's just something to allow in the A1.
So then that's how it started the conversation of the, the A1.
Yeah, the, the, A1 accommodated whatever option ends up, okay, basically. And then, because I had some trouble with how well this matched agribusiness, what I think the mayor charged me with, look at A1 and A1R, and see if there's some way we can accommodate them, that, and this zone.
Right.
Okay, so then I went about and look, did my research, and I found that people have greenhouses and they're selling stuff they produce on site, all over the place. In fact, I made the comment, you know, the wording, the verbiage in the, the ordinances around the, the border are all the same. What, what happened in the city council meeting, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that a lot that's driving this is trying to be nice to the birds and allow them to stay in business. And before we got done, we started talking about two separate ordinances which aren't even close to each other in the city code. One is under business license, which is agribusiness. The A1, A1R is under zoning. What the mayor charged me with the responsibility is look at the A1, and I included A1R, and see if there's some way we can accommodate a person that has a greenhouse selling material to the public.
So now, hold on.
Okay, that's, that's, that's sort of the background.
So now explain this to me, why don't they fit in agribusiness?
And, and we, there'll be lots of debate, and I'll probably run away from Far West when that happens. I, I, here's, and I'm gonna use it again, if people are gonna get upset. There's a difference between horticulture and agronomy. Horticulture, you produce plants, some of them are crop plants, some of them are ornamentals that have nothing to do with agriculture, with crops. And you produce the plants and you sell them, you can tell the people how to grow them, some nursery, you provide them with all kinds of amenities, fertilizer and pesticides and all that. That's, that's the agronomy end of it, or the, the horticulture end of it. Agronomy is where you actually take them, you put it in the ground, and you have an operational farm, that's why it's called agribusiness. And in my view, the intent of that was to have people come on site to see a working farm.
Okay, yeah, behind the, yeah.
When you go to a nursery, it is not a working farm.
Right.
Um, I understand why they're selling some of these other products. To me, that's where they cross the line between producing it on the premises and coming into commercial operation.
How do you incorporate the, like, where we had the portions where they could have a wedding venue and things like that? Right, the agribusiness, how do you incorporate that into the?
They got the wings trimmed on that, because pretty soon it evolved into a reception center, it just happened to be on a farm.
Right.
And if you read the ordinance, that's not, that's not the way you reads now. So, uh, the idea is people come on site and have a farm experience.
Okay, not come on site because you're functioning a business.
You're not, you're not coming on site solely to buy some plant material and leave.
I got you.
You're doing more than that.
Yeah.
And that's where I differ from some other people.
Okay.
Where things got complicated in the city council meeting is that, uh, sometimes people were talking about agribusiness, and sometimes people were talking about A1, and we were mixing the discussion between two separate zones that are in completely different parts. One is a business license issue, the other one is a zoning issue.
And you're truly right, the experience of, of what your land has to offer to be what we created for the agribusiness first, what we're trying to allow in the A1.
So, and, and, and one of the suggestions was, let's go back to agribusiness and revisit it, that's, that's the one possibility. Another comment that was raised by at least two people is bakery in the wording, and I know the word that they had trouble with, and that's retail sales.
Yeah.
Because you could argue, if I, if I grow a plant and sell it for profit, and charge tax for it, that's retail sales.
That was one that Liam specifically said.
I came up with a very easy solution for that, and it's actually at the suggestion of David Chubb. No retail shop operation where items previously purchased are resold. That's where the distinction is, if you grow it and produce it, sell it. If you buy something somebody else produced, fertilizer or some other amenity, and you resell it, that's where it's no longer something produced on your property, it's something that is resold, it's commercial.
Because you purchased it, too.
That's a possible, that's, that's a possible wording that we'll get around, that issue of bakery.
So, if you take.
At the stage, we're gonna have an open meeting about it.
Right, well, and if you take those two pieces, if we're, if this started because of the one applicant, they still aren't gonna fit in either.
Here's the deal, if the objective.
And I know that's not the objective of what we did, but they're still gonna be out.
If the objective, if the end product is a solution for the birds, where they sell stuff they produce on, they can do whatever they want without any restriction, you're gonna be hard pressed to make it match anything.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same, none of these are going to help them.
Now, if, if the issue, they can, they can grow all they want in their property, their greenhouses, and I don't even care if they grow it off-site in some other property they own, at least it's something they produce.
Right.
And they resell it, it would be consistent with the ordinance proposal that we made with this possible correction or modification. correction or modification of the bakery and retail sales.
Okay.
So, that's where it's at.
Okay.
So there will be a future meeting and who knows what will happen.
That was, those are my questions. Do you have any other input?
And one final personal note.
Yeah.
I think the birds are wonderful people. I could care less what they do on their property. My good colleague, Lao Earl, got me involved in this, thoroughly involved emotionally. And then he kind of let me lead the charge.
Yeah, and then you got via.
And I would go back after, lick my wounds and he'd say, you did a great job. You're right on the target, you know, and then I'd go back up again and get kicked in the face again.
Yeah.
So, but the point is, I don't have, I do have this, and this is a philosophical statement. When we make changes to the code, we listen to the public, we learn, we get ideas, but we make changes that are bigger and larger than any family, any individual.
Mm-hmm, correct.
And that's, uh, that is, I feel very strongly about that philosophy and I won't compromise that. Now, if we wanna change the direction of the agribusiness, which was Brian's baby in the first place and never, he pushed it and it never, by the time he saw what it involved to, that wasn't what he was aiming for in the first place. So we, we basically have it on the code and it's never been tested. So, which means it could be subjected to review.
Now, when I was speaking with the birds, I thought, we're gonna be exercising that whole thing to see if this even fits. What I mean, if you know what I mean, I know, we have not been down this road, we don't know.
Oh, yeah. We were, we were stumbling around, trying to figure, we were looking for examples and this thing was evolving right up to the, the day we asked it.
Right.
So it's, I don't, I'm not shocked that it will continue to evolve.
So I've never been there. What's like the mix of things you think that they personally grow versus whether they're just reselling?
It's just on the screen.
I'm gonna have to go, I'm gonna have to.
Well, I think it was more the materials that they sell.
They, they, what, what Lao, his concern was, well, unfair, unfair competition with another nursery in Far West, but it was becoming, it was the commercial piece of it. You know, it was not, you, you, you grow produce on your land and you have a right to sell what you grow on your land.
Truly being a business.
If you're bringing in products somebody else made and you're reselling, that's, that's the rub.
Well, and, and one thing that I'd like to at least interject is, I think even, let, let's say, it's totally about the zoning. They're able to, you know, produce and grow those types of things. I think I heard once at one of your meetings that there wouldn't be a business license. I think I would say, no, I think there needs to be a business license, cause according to our code, anyone selling anything in Far West needs a business license.
No, technically, it'd be the home business.
No, no, I, I think.
I maybe I misheard that.
No, 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 I absolutely, there needs to be a business license.
Just the, I mean.
Saying you can't call it a residential business because it doesn't match that at all.
Oh, that, that's.
Right.
Right, and so we're gonna have to come up with basically another type of business license for this. But the, the fact that they have a business license, that means that's what you have to ensure that they follow whatever these rules are, right?
That they have to comply with.
So it doesn't more, that's one of those boundaries that you're putting on it is, so that it doesn't get out of control.
And that's, and hence, this is the change in the zoning, just to say, yes, you can come in and get a license to sell your, the stuff you produce on your land.
Yeah.
And it should be a ru, almost a rubber stamp decision, but there are some restrictions placed on what you can do. That's, that's where it's.
Okay.
The restrictions on that, you know, are the things you're talking about. And then our enforcement of that as well, if you don't abide by what you promised you would.
Right. You don't get.
You know, under how, we can choose to revoke the license. And I think that that's fair with any business.
Have you gone back and looked at their, uh, uh, agribusiness ordinance?
Pardon?
Have you looked at the agribusiness ordinance with regard to this?
I was kind of disadvantaged in that city council meeting, cause they kept making reference to it and I haven't read it for a while.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't focusing on it. I was, I was focusing on the zoning.
Sure. In my mind, when we were writing with Bryant, I remember him wanting to bring in like cakes and donuts and all that stuff and sell them onsite. Well, it's not something that he was making onsite, it was, we're gonna put in a little shop.
Yeah.
So, if they're doing that in the agribusiness, what's the difference for doing that over here?
Well.
Well, that's what we're saying, that they don't.
He didn't like, when we got done, it was basically, you go there and you have an experience on an operational farm.
Sure, no, I don't disagree with that. I remember that part, but I still remember him wanting to bring in stuff.
But we didn't say yes to that, did we?
I, I need to go back and reread it, but I have it in my mind, we did.
Well, that's defined as you, you know, only stuff you produce, but I don't think, I don't know. We'll have to review.
I have some problems, I mean, the, 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 to me, the.
It was all about the experience.
The guiding principle was, they go on a farm.
Sure.
And they have this, this living farm experience, you know, and it could take any, it can bo, it can be all kinds of things.
Sure.
Um, and I, I like the concept.
I do too.
Now, we, we haven't tried it, so we were kinda doing a lot of guessing in the process, you know.
I just have it in my head and again, it's just my mind, it's my head, so I need to go back and look at it myself, that we allowed that.
But, but you, don't you agree with me, let's take one at a time.
Sure.
If, if you wanna revisit the agribusiness ordinance.
Right, yeah.
If you wanna review the A one, A one R ordinance too, but don't start.
Sure. Mix and match it, yeah.
That's what you mean to do, cause they're not even part of the.
No, but that's the thing is.
The way they're related is the, uh, agribusiness.
A, right.
Can only apply.
Requires it, yeah, exactly.
Right.
Let's just call them A ones, you know, A one and A one R.
Yeah.
I get my flavors in the same history on our books.
Right.
Okay, I think that's a good refresher. Let's go to, um, the mayor.
Okay, so the thing I wanted to bring up, which is kind of along the lines of this, so we did have some discussion about, um, you know, the subdivision process that we need to address.
And I did talk to Liam about that and I said, let's, at the end of August, get on top of that, cause I said, we gotta get through the Fitch. So, I did warn him in the last city council meeting. He said, great, I'll refresh what we need to do and then we can meet.
And what I, what I run past the planning commission is, this, this is my vision of our administrative land use authority. That's what they're calling it, right, that that's what we need. And, um, what I'd like to see is basically, um, two planning commissioners, um, one or more public works, our engineering and our recorder, be the final say on the subdivision. The reason I say that is because those are all the people that will know whether or not the roads are wide enough, the pipes are in the right place, yada, yada, yada.
So, two planning commission, public works, engineer.
Engineer and the recorder.
Recorder.
I love that myself.
Yeah, I think that's great.
People have had the most smarts about the decision involved.
And that's the authority for residential subdivisions, cause that's what this has been serving.
So, in.
That's the, that's the, you're just residential, not residential.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
So, in that loop.
And, yeah, but the way they talk about it is, see, it's the city council's job to basically do legislative decisions like zoning, right? Once we have approved a zone, well, guess what? You can put a subdivision in it and everything else is, and almost has always been, get a clean letter.
Yeah.
Right? And the rest of it's been like, if it's a clean letter.
Good.
Yep, and.
Right, there isn't any discussion anymore after that. There isn't any thought behind it.
The will serves, the en, clean engineer's letter and the will serves.
Yeah, that's. And then me, and he, Matt checks all the ordinances, so he knows, I mean, that is our bible essentially. So, in that process, are we allowed to update how we, um, do some like the development agreement? Like, I was talking to Andrea about this the other day, like, I think the development, sorry, not development agreement, development meeting, or like your concept meeting.
Uh-huh.
That is such a valuable meeting to anything.
We still do those.
Okay, and I wanna make sure it's required, but I also want there to be, like, can we incorporate where Matt and Robbie and I have talked about, like, a fee with that and then required documents that they can't, you know, just some things like that to kind of clean that up? Is that the time?
I definitely require that, but definitely encourage that.
Yeah.
For their own good, because it, it's like, it, like, every time we have those meetings, they're like, well, how much of a process is this? And I tell them every time, depends on how prepared you are.
Right.
If you're prepared, this won't be hard.
Right, yeah. But like, those are, those solve eighty percent of the problems before they get a, get in front of us, which is so nice.
Yeah, so you're kind of, upfront, it's almost the same people, right?
Yep, exactly.
Looking at these things. It then comes through the planning commission to, you know, go through all of those weeds. And then on the final approval, I mean, it can still go through the process as it does now through city council, preliminary. But the final is administrative land use authority, so that, that's kind of where I'd like to, where we take that.
And then we still see site plans and things like that, so.
For sure.
Yeah, and, um, another thing about it, I think we have to look at our current, um, ordinance on the subdivisions, because they, we have timelines in there, they have to change.
Okay.
Because, one of, one of the things, like, once there is, um, at some point in the process, I'm trying to remember exactly which point, there's like a shot clock where it's like, okay, if it's not approved by the authority within like two weeks, it's approved.
Oh, so we gotta change it, okay.
We did that sixteen months too.
That's what I'm talking about. And this is all.
Well, we should see too, some of these processes could be cleaned up too, like.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And they, they get like a, a four.
Right.
Back and forth, like the red line type thing.
Yeah, well, and just some of the.
But one thing that they need to clear is if, it doesn't count as a cycle if they haven't addressed everything in the first red, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Haven't addressed them, they don't get to just ignore them four times in their career.
Right, right.
But no, they have to address what's been written up.
Yep.
Before they can go to the next cycle and they get four of them, or we all get four of them. And then, and it's like, then it's approved.
The frustrating part that I have with that is you may see something, they change it and it creates another problem. But you can't go after that because you've already seen it.
No, we're now in the next cycle.
Right.
Yeah.
But we still, but I like, we have two representatives from the planning commission.
Don't disagree with me.
That, that's the, that's the safety.
Right.
You know.
I just, coming from where I come from, this is one of the big arguments we always had with this law that they were looking to pass, which they've now passed. Is if you say you have this problem, you need to fix it, they go in and fix it, but it creates additional problems elsewhere, you can't touch those now.
Well, you can still in the next cycle, you can touch them. Yeah, you can. Yeah, oh, yeah, you can.
So, the, the city engineer can review.
The city engineer can, yeah, they're limiting, they're limiting on what you can do.
You, you can also ensure that it's cleaned and cleaned before you get done with the preliminary.
Right, it's not necessarily the times that, it's more of the timeframes, like, they have certain times to be able to give it back to you to make comments so that it's not just sitting on someone's desk.
And part of it's funny, because, um, what they've been saying is that, um, so developers have been complaining that the cities are in their way and they can take too long. Well, the facts show, the data shows, most of the time spent is when they haven't addressed the issues, it's the applicants who are most in line.
Hundred percent, and I work in that field and I agree with you. Hundred percent.
So, we'll have to review our check, or rewrite our, or revamp our checklist a little bit.
Yes.
Yeah.
To, 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 to tie timelines according to that S and whatever.
Thank goodness we got people in the office that stick to them on that checklist.
Yeah, they're very good at that.
Because, you know, if they didn't, then all we'd say is, go back to the well, cause you haven't even checked out the things you wrote in before we go.
Right, and, and, and it doesn't, nothing starts until they have a complete application. And we define what complete is, and I think we've talked about that many times, you know.
Yeah.
There's times when they just do this, this and this, and it's like, it's not complete, you didn't fill out this part.
Yep.
You know, and that's part of, cause, once again, it's how prepared are they? If it's a complete application and they checked all the boxes, isn't it easy for everybody?
Right, exactly.
Okay, I, and then I have one other thing I'm wondering about, that the planning commission can, while it's a process. I also was wondering, and that is just a brain fart I had, uh, land use advisory committee.
That would be different from the.
It could include members of the land use authority, but basically it would add two city council members. So that some of these discussions we have about where things are going, that way, you know, both parties can take these discussions back to their bodies and avoid some of what we, we've just run into.
You know, I don't have any problem with that. I think the real issue is stacking too many meetings in a row. If you have representatives from both the city council and the planning commission on that same body.
They're making it very.
They're, they're, and, no, but the point is, the meeting is a joint meeting rather than they meet with us and then it has to go to the city council. That's what they're.
Well, give me an example of what the land use authority or land use advisory committee would do.
Different from the other.
Yeah.
So when we have ideas, like for instance, um, some of what Janelle's working on with, I was thinking, how can we address like all of this housing stuff that we have to address every year?
We have a.
We have to go through, like, some of the stuff that we're trying to do is, we promise that we're going to review.
Yeah.
Our strategies, you know, that we picked and say how well we've been doing. Well, that's something that that advisory committee can do.
So similar to like a parks committee where, you know, the first Thursday of the month or whatever, Tuesday, they meet, something like that where, so they're not actually making decisions or anything, they're just directing and they're there, okay, okay.
To, to help us address some of this, it's really, I don't want a lot of housing thing.
And prepare. Yeah.
We have to do something about housing.
Can't, why can't some of that be joint meeting?
Oh, it could be, I mean, also.
That's our, that's, this housing thing.
Well, you're, you're.
Yeah.
Ended up as a product of joint meeting.
The thing I wondered is, does it need to be always every month?
Right.
I don't know about that.
Well, and that's the thing, the land use advisory committee would consist.
We do have, uh, if I'm just going to get it all, it's a business.
I kind of like it, cause you could have, what, two planning commission members, a couple city council members?
Uh, once again, public workers.
Yeah, public works.
We don't have to have engineering on that.
Nope.
Cause this is just, like, for instance, okay, is the, um, percentage of smaller lots in the, uh, R one fifteen working for us? What could we do to adjust that? And it's just kind of brainstorming thing of, what could we do? Increase? What can we do to purge this, the internal accessory dwelling units? It's like, we have that on the books, but nobody signed up for it. What can we do about that?
So do you think there's a reason at all that if we're already gonna create the, um, why are you laughing at me?
I'm not.
Oh, I'm like, did I say something?
I'm not, with the fact that I know of at least three of mine either.
Oh, yeah.
They've got to be.
So if we're already gonna create the subdivision or the whatever they're calling it, land use authority, could that authority, in order to get to know their jobs and stuff, start doing some of those tasks? And then if it becomes more, then it becomes as, an advisory committee, but I think that core group is a good start, but you're right, there's no city council on it.
That's the only reason I'm like, I have to make it this up, I think, is you have these two city council members.
Which is important.
Stuff that, okay, you got all the way through it and you ran into these folks up here and they're like, what the hell are you thinking?
Yeah. No, I think that's a great idea, actually.
I, I do think when you're in a genuine brainstorm session, you ought to get, it ought to be a joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
You're starting very broad.
Yeah.
When you get more to fine tuning the specifics, then you, you don't want a mob, you know.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I think it depends a little bit on where you're at on that, that process, but, you know what I'm saying?
Could you make it less intrusive to be, once a quarter, there's a land, there's a joint city council, uh, planning commission work session that relates to land uses?
Yeah, and maybe we should just do it that way for our annual report. We have to do an annual report.
And then see if. Yeah.
What have we done in the last twelve months to increase our moderate income housing?
And then I think naturally, a smaller group would form off of that when we need it. I like that.
Could, would, who, at whose discretion, I would like to see the chairman of the planning commission select the representatives from the planning commission and you do it for the city council, simply because you probably know more about their involvement in whatever than anybody else would.
Once we get to that point, you mean?
Yeah, in other words, when you're, when you're selecting the, the composition of that committee.
Yeah.
You would be the person representing, making the recommendation for the two members.
Yeah.
From this, from the, simply because you have the best feel for who you think would be, and that would not be a fixed assignment, if it.
Right, it could change.
At your discretion, it would be, does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Well, same as the land one.
Cause there's members of these bodies communicating about this stuff, cause that's really where we need to improve, right, the cooperation at all.
Right. Well, I do think whoever's on the land use advisor or land use authority, that's awful.
The authority, the one. Solid.
Authority, yeah, I think the number one, and I'm not just saying this cause it's me, but the chair does need to sit on that committee.
Oh, that's.
And then the other one needs to, you know, can rotate or be something, but, yeah, there's, cause it's easy to get lost.
And I think we have to do the land use authority as part of your.
Okay, so we can label it, all the people that.
The other thing is just something we're coming up with, so like we have a part of it.
Yeah, perfect, okay.
It's just a group.
But I think if we can start with the joint, and then I think it'll naturally form however we need it to.
If we assume the rest won't show up.
Exactly, exactly, no, I like that, I think that's a great idea, yeah.
And. Um. Uh.
Yeah. Yeah, go for it.
Whatever.
In uh, in all of this land use authority and advisory board, and all this work and meetings and communication. Does anybody have the general plan right there next to them and make sure that they match whatever make changes you're making?
In our heads, no, I'm just kidding, we all have our computers.
We, believe we are a lot more, and probably credit the mayor for this, we are a lot more religious about.
Yeah.
I, I read it quite regularly, relatively, simply because that's our fallback. When we, when we revise the general plan, we just completed that revision recently. That, and if you go to any of the training sessions, they make it very clear, that is your bible.
Yeah.
You can fall back on that and you've got an absolute defense of your stance. You start saying, I think it's a good idea and it's not in the general plan, boy, are you on thin ice.
Yeah, so.
Answers my question.
No, 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 we take it very serious.
Yeah. Or, or, I've, I've been recommended for a good long time, Lou knows this, it's like, okay, when anybody comes in for anything, the first question should be, does it match the general plan? First question.
So that revision of the general plan.
And if it doesn't, then it's either no or consider, you know, amending or ending.
Which we have done, what we, our initial stance is not allowed.
Yes. Just like there is something that's going to be coming in soon, where we made that clear in the, the development meeting, so you'll be happy about this, so. You know the property next to Black Pine that happens to be behind, you know where I'm talking about? They're already talking about they wanna do the, at, M one zone, they said, this is gonna be a problem, Michael. I'm not gonna speak for the public or any of the bodies, but the first thing you're gonna have to do is update, you know, ask for an amendment to the general plan. Where you have an application for that, I'm like, well, you'd actually have to apply for the zone, which would trigger the, we need to amend the general plan. And then you go through that process, because he was already showing me buildings, like, I don't wanna see buildings yet.
Well, there's, there's a little bit of training involved, sure.
So anyway.
Is that, that's one's not up to date, is it?
It's twenty one.
Twenty one?
No.
But not after our last.
I don't know, what have we done since, I, I always had the idea, you know, in my mind, it was like, we should have one of these in a crayon. So every time you rezone something, color it in, so it's current. I think the one online is current.
Well, I hope that's.
Well, there's one that Jones keeps up to date, it's GIS, where you go to zone his property and it shows you the zone they're in.
What are you talking about, sorry?
Um.
The GeoGis not shows what's on there and too?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Yeah, I said, this is sort of up to date, it's twenty one, two years old.
Well, and the updated um, one that we did in January related to, yeah, that one's online.
General plan. Okay.
That one's there.
Just get these big ones, takes time.
I know, well, and it changed, well, changes.
We saw, we see on the screens with the picture up here, it's current.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and then you could touch it when it changes?
Zoom in on.
Because that's the hardest part is that.
I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
Man, it's Pleasant View's one awful to watch online.
Oh, no.
YouTube, you, you can't even see anything, ours is way better set up.
Awful.
Can't even see anything.
Thank you for this.
I want, I want one of those where it's like a.
Okay. Thinking about, as, because we're halfway through the year, there are things by end of year we need to be aware of.
The biggest thing is that SB thing that we're, the subdivision stuff.
Okay, and we have to have that done with.
Do, do you know that, seven, go.
Two fifty eight, I think.
Two fifty eight?
It might be fifty eight, it's been a while since I've looked at it.
There's three digits to it.
Yeah.
There's three digits.
And actually, um.
I think it's two fifty eight.
So that, that's what they were talking about when big cities and towns, yeah, and that's what they were talking about.
Yeah. It's been a while since I've looked at it, so don't, don't hold me to that.
When the league of cities and towns was there, they gave us the deadline for having the subdivision thing up and running.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
Did you create a spreadsheet for us to put our education in?
Oh, yeah, I'm getting to that. I'll put it in the.
I'm honored to do this.
Yeah, some I really long to do this.
Yeah, listen to that.
Uh, we'll do a training.
I'm all up to date on my training.
I think I'm good now.
Are you gonna come do some training?
Yeah, I was gonna say, in Sept, maybe September, October, once everyone's back in school and on a routine, we'll do a training with Leah. And then the rest of the year will go by pretty fast, so.
And you get to do four hours, again, right after the first, about, every year you gotta do four hours. I think one hour is meetings.
Attending the meetings, yeah.
So they have to do three hours.
Unless you don't attend.
And, and if, if you went to the thing in Pleasant View, that would pair two of them.
Yep.
And then if you went to the ones that you sent out earlier, that's another two.
Upcoming, do we wanna plan, so in our next work session, two weeks from now? Do we wanna go over the conditional use piece, or do we wanna go back to the M one C two stuff, what would you guys prefer to hit first?
Well, can I just comment on that, that, the, it, it turns out there's, we've got a choice going in one, one of two directions.
Okay.
Um, we could do a lot of changing to our conditional use.
Okay.
And it turns out, I just wanna.
I guess they are, they do come together, so.
Right, they, 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 they merge one way or another.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Uh, but I, I want, I want to read something from the League of Cities and Towns, this will be a reiteration of what we've already heard. If there are no identifiable standards, identifiable standards contained in the ordinance, there is no basis for denying a permit. They're referring to a conditional use. A conditional use basically is, you can do it, but it's gotta meet certain conditions, and those conditions have to be alluded to in the ordinance. Okay, now, it's interesting, here's Far West's conditional use statement, we don't have a set of standards, which I think we need to think serious about. And that's different than a long endless list, if you're our standard, you gotta meet our standard. Here's what it says, in making a recommendation on conditional uses, the planning commissions shall consider the existing zoning and use of the surrounding property, that's quite vague. The present and future requirement for streets, off-street parking and on-street parking in relation to exits and entrances for public streets. Pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation, availability of water and other utilities and other public requirements. In other words, our statement doesn't say anything, it doesn't say anything about noise, nuisance, pollution, or anything. So based on this statement, almost all of those conditions that we impose on them, you start asking all these questions about noise, air, you know, pollution, water pollution. And all of that, we don't have anything in our statement that even says that we should, we can even talk about it. Now, so, and I, there's, there's all kinds of suggestions, the League of City has suggestions of items you can include. I've got some examples which we won't talk about now for other communities, that's one way of doing it.
Okay.
The other way, and the League of Cities really isn't keen on conditional use anyway, they don't like it. The other way of doing that is really tighten up our nuisance statements in our ordinance. So it includes every possible nuisance, okay? So it says, and we're not aiming at M one or C two or anybody else, it's anybody in Far West that's in violation of water, air, soil.
Yeah, I see for certain, I'm a commercialize.
Contamination, noise.
That, the nuisance statement in our, in our ordinance.
Now, here's the advantage, here's the advantage of doing this. It gets to the other issue where we sometimes forced to, we have to grant a conditional use on somebody that can't tell us who's, the tenant is.
Right, then, then they at least have to follow these.
Then all we say is, okay, and we'd say, okay, understand, we'd make strong reference to our nuisance ordinance, say, you've gotta be in compliance with all of these things to deal with. And we can be very specific and very inclusive in our nuisance.
I like that.
My recommendation is, that's the direction we ought to go in.
But we can still do stuff that we don't want.
Oh, no, that does, there's prohibited uses, it's just that when you say a conditional use, and your conditional use statement in the ordinance doesn't have a bunch of standards. And you start imposing standards on them, on the, on the fly, in the meeting, if they wanted to take us to court, they could bring us out. Okay, if we've got, if we've stated, and, and if you think about it, almost every condition that we come up with deals with one of those things. It deals with noise, or lights, or traffic, or, in other words, the point is, it's, we're worried about the potential nuisance or degradation of the environment, are we not? I can't think of a scene, if it's not traffic, degradation of environment, or some other nuisance, we don't see, we don't, if it's done inside the building. And it's not affecting the neighbors.
Just need to be concerned with the health, safety, and welfare of the neighbors.
And, and, and whatever, you know.
Yeah, that's usually what.
Now, we can make a long exhaustive list of what they can or cannot do, but I think, I think this, when we start on it, I think this is probably the direction we ought to go, but that's just my recommendation.
Let's go, sorry.
We talked about this at one time, that's why I brought out all the lists.
Well, and that was very good.
No, and I asked you to do that, you did, you did a great job.
That scared the, that scared it out of me.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ew, okay, so next work session, maybe we talk more about that, if we don't have anything else.
Yeah.
I think we have that.
We'll have to.
Check the agribusiness thing.
Well, we gotta have that joint work session.
Yeah, joint session.
So I need to request that next. Such a letdown.
What helped you?
They were all, when I came in today, they were all getting their.
Somebody called this the Morgan pit crew. Wherever you go and you need to take your chairs and all that kind of stuff, it's like, Morgan pit crews, they don't like, except here, the chairs are collapsible.
Uh.
That's the, you're gonna be by the way on top there.
Yeah. You don't need me in there today, do you?
You actually are gonna probably be up here today.
Okay.
Join us, Jason? Oh, man, my head hurts. So, we're going, oh, welcome back, Brandon. Back in your duties.
I think I did this.
Oh, well, I don't.
It's just my best, yep. I wanna still use a little bit of your verbiage, that's okay, it's just, sorry.
You know, that one we need to look up?
I'll look at it when I get, when we get all these, put it all together and.
I don't think. And I have a. Just trying to keep it consistent.
You want that? Okay, remind me.
I signed up a favorite so that I can go on there.
Yeah, I'll find that for you.
But. Yeah. We'll look at it.
Glad so many people came for our meeting. No, he is out for the next two meetings, and then Lyle's out for this meeting. Oh. I don't think, uh, can I have another one of those, uh, Jason?
Yeah, here.
Yeah, sorry, we forgot about those. Did you try that again? You jerk.
I need one too.
Oh.
I just.
Remember when you used to type messages?
I did. I used to type, I used to type minutes.
Okay.
We can.
I've been only typing minutes too, so.
Um, Brandon, you wanna lead the pledge?
Yeah.
Gosh, I feel like I always ask the same thing, uh, Darren, you did it last time, did you?
I guess. No, I did it the time before, so we're good.
Okay, Darren. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order, we're gonna start with a pledge from Brandon and a prayer from Darren. If everyone would stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our kind Father in Heaven, grateful to be in attendance at planning commission meeting this evening, we ask you to watch over us as we discuss the affairs of Far West City. We are grateful to thee for the opportunity to serve in this community, we are grateful for the residents who live here and pray for their protection. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Okay, public comment, I have a public comment, oh, mayor, go. Okay, then I have another one.
And this has absolutely nothing to do with anything that's on the agenda.
Okay.
I want, basically, I want to invite all of you to dinner and a movie, August second, Smith Family Park. Trucks are there, the food trucks are there from five till eight, uh, movies at dusk, it's still Lyle Isle Crocodile, it's the one that we had to cancel for the Freedom Festival. There will be a truck that will have like drinks and popcorn, so, spread the word.
Okay.
We wanna keep these food trucks coming, so far, I've, my wife hasn't had to do anything about dinner for the last three Wednesdays, so, thank you.
Okay, I have an assignment for, well, maybe I should write down my assignments, I just have a comment and I'm gonna assign it to you, the mayor. Someone mentioned, and I don't remember his name, in one of our last meetings that the flags in our chambers room are on the wrong side. So will you do a little research on that? And then I went to a couple city meetings the last couple weeks and all their flags were on the other side.
Okay.
I don't know what it means, but they made that comment.
Okay, Darren, you can probably help me with that, huh?
There you go.
They should be over here.
Oh.
Both of them or just?
Both of them.
What, is, okay, how come we've only, it's only been seven years?
You're, you're funny getting around to it, Darren.
What is the, what's the reasoning behind it?
And there's really no good place to put it over here, since that's the ramp up to the.
Well, we could move that table.
Anyway.
We can, we can figure it out and get it correct.
What is the reasoning behind that, why is it?
Etiquette.
Yeah, it's just flag etiquette.
That it's always on the left, okay.
It's like, you know, when you have a flag on, if you have a flag on your car, even though it looks weird.
Always.
Sometimes it's faced, it's backwards from what you think, because it's supposed to be, what do they call it, going with, like, the winds blowing in.
The stripe.
Charging forward, that's what it is, so that's why on a car you'll see, you know, a flag, it looks backwards, but it's not. Or even how, how they, um, were carrying like the, the major flag down the road, from above it looked wrong, but it wasn't.
Well, we solved that really fast, okay, thank you, okay, report from city council.
Thanks for your left side of the aisle, right side, yeah.
Okay, this is the report from last week's meeting on July twentieth, uh, we received a report from the planning commission, we approved minutes and bills. We heard from RKDO Productions LLC, um, and we approved a conditional use permit for that as well as a business license. Um, and then we had a lot of discussion on the A one and A one R. So Lyle, or Lou, I'm sorry if you were, felt under attack, it was not personal.
Blame Lyle, you started off right.
So we had some good discussion, but anyway, it, it did end up tabled so that we can have a work session and separate the two, A one versus agribusiness. Um, and I still do appreciate your passion and your work on it, just because I may not agree doesn't mean, I, it's not personal.
Mayor asked me to do.
You did great, um, and then, oh, and I also wanna owe you an apology because I searched that agribusiness ordinance. And on our website, it comes up with like the first page, so I printed it, I was like, oh, great, it's right here, and then you were talking about education, I was like, it doesn't see anything in here. I look at Katie's, I was like, that is not the same thing that I printed up, so I did not see the whole ordinance, and now I see the education purpose, anyway. Um, we tabled the sign ordinance as well until we can have a discussion on A one. Um, assignments for the planning commission was to include that setup, setting up the work session for the A one, um, ordinance, and then, like you guys did tonight, start thinking about the subdivision committee. Um, and then we reported on assignments, the more notable ones that I made note of was, um, Katie's gonna start some outreach for internal accessory dwelling units so that we can get something to report. I have to submit this report, I'm almost done with it now, so I'll be submitting that tonight for the, our August first deadline, so I can't report any new permitted units in that strategy. So hopefully with some, some outreach, the next time we can have some progress on that, and then, yeah, just the moderate income housing. We met with, um, Alyssa Gamble on Tuesday and got some feedback, so I think we're, we'll be good once we get it submitted and I'll finish that today. So, any questions?
Oh.
Thanks.
Thank you, okay, moving on to our first business item, set a public hearing for August twenty fourth, twenty twenty three to consider the rezone request for parcel fifteen. to consider the rezone request for parcel fifteen, seven seventy-one, located at approximately twelve forty-six North, two thousand West, from R one fifteen zone to the C two zone. So Jordan won't be here tonight, but I talked to him, so, uh, they approached me in saying that the large user, you guys have seen the site plan before, the large user that they had before, um, has backed away, and they would like to just do a uniform subdivision, and, um, they, to clean it up and make it easy, they wanna add in that residential piece.
Oh.
So what we had.
So that's where we're rezoning.
Sorry, yeah, so that's the portion, sorry, in yellow, is we're just rezoning the piece that has the little house on it right now. And that's all, the, the site plan, all that stuff will come back to us later, but, um, it's just the rezone for that. So, in that, all we're doing is setting a public hearing, and then next meeting, Jordan will be here and you can quiz away.
That seems like a very rational move.
Yeah.
So I moved that we set the public hearing as specified.
Motion by Lou?
Second.
Second by Greg, I'm slow with names today, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next one, the recommendation to City Council preliminary approval for the Far West Pleasant View Road Dedication Subdivision, which would be Far West Point and Colmina Group. Although, I don't see them here. Did anyone, well, I guess I had.
I looked over closely, cause that's gonna come out by my work over there, so it looked pretty good to me, there's a lot of, I mean, there's some, quite a few conditions left on that.
Right.
But, that they have to, they have to clean up, but.
Conceptually, it makes complete sense, you know, I don't have any problem with that.
And helps move the rest, especially related to the road forward.
And, and most of the engineers thing is, is cleaning up issues, he doesn't have any real major engineering questions on it.
There's just all the red line stuff on the drawings to, to address and stuff, but it's all, it all looked pretty good, so.
And it's, it is for preliminary approval only, so if someone wanted to motion to include one through six on the men, uh, engineers memo, which does include the red line comments on the plat, um, I don't have any questions for the applicant, even though they're not here, it was pretty simple.
Right, and I'll, I'll recommend to the City Council preliminary approval of the Far West Pleasant View Road Dedication Subdivision, Far West Point LLC and Colmina Group, um, on condition that they, um, clean up everything on the engineering letter.
Perfect, motion by Brent, or Darren?
Second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next one, recommend to the City Council approval or denial of the amendments to the nuisance ordinance um, that we've obviously talked about, is there any other questions on that? Is there a motion?
Motion, we approve the nuisance ordinance.
Amendments.
Oh, yeah, the amendments to the nuisance ordinance.
Perfect, motion by Brandon.
Second.
Second by Greg, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, recommendation to City Council approval or denial of the fifty-five and older patio home ordinance.
I recommend you, you admit to the, to the City Council approval with the modifications and changes that we discussed tonight, uh, on the fifty-five plus patio home mortgage.
A second.
Okay, motion by Greg, second by Lou, and I will get, or no, your red, it's, do you want me to just redline it, cause then I can send it to Andrea and never get on City Council?
Yeah, and if you, if you see anything else, it needs to be.
Yeah. I will accept, um, Liam's red lines and fix the ones we talked about, and then make sure it gets to Andrea for City Council agenda tomorrow. So, okay, all, ooh, did I say all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, recommendation to City Council final approval for the Hart subdivision, phase four. So this one, the developer has been asked, uh, or called and asked to be tabled, they're still working out a couple things related to roads and lot size and a couple things, so he would like to go through that with Matt and clean that up, and then, um, he'll be back on the next agenda.
How does that grade up to the canal?
So they've worked it out to grade, so they're gonna put the structural fill up to it.
Okay.
And then they'll leave it at that point.
But the structural field will be.
Yes.
Does that, does that help, um, that's right by me, I see that area, the, the farm gets flooded, right? But then the phase three of that development, all the backyards and that, when the farm floods for irrigation, that comes in, do we have anything that would make sure that these houses that would be in that depth of water during the flooding don't get?
This should be high enough, though, because they had to bring so much dirt in for this project, but rem- remember that question and ask Cecil when he's here next meeting, you can ask him that, I know Matt wouldn't have approved, you know, they're, they're having to detain or retain the water anyways, so, but you can ask Cecil about that.
Very good on this whole project.
They have.
I mean.
They have, and some of the stuff that they'll bring up in the next meeting, we do have to remember this project was approved, gosh, four or five years ago.
Living area of a home.
So some of the stuff that they're working through is just related to stuff that was approved and promised, you know, when they got their approvals, so. Yeah, and they do, they have some of that, yeah, so, okay, so this one, if someone wants to motion to table, we'll see them, next agenda.
My motion to table Hart subdivision phase four.
Second.
By Darren, second by Greg, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next consent item, approval of minutes dated July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, is there any comments on them?
Recommend we approve the minutes from July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Greg.
I'll second.
Second by Darren, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um.
I also wanna give Kenzie props on her minutes as of late.
Yeah, they've been great. I know, they really have been good.
Maybe you can talk to the mayor about giving her a raise.
Um, okay, next, report on assignments, Brandon?
I listened to the Far West, um, City Council, it was really interesting, it was good.
Far West or Pleasant View?
Oh, Pleasant View.
I'm like, wow, look at you go.
I grew up in Far, I grew up in Pleasant View, so, okay, but it sounds like they had, like, a tragic accident where a little girl got hit by a lawnmower, and then they had their first eight people, the first responders, put a tourniquet on, saved her life, so they gave a bunch of awards, that was pretty awesome.
You what? Oh.
Uh, they saved her life, so, they said they were there, got tourniquets and.
Oh, that's good.
It been bad at the same time.
Jason?
Uh, no updates, still watching on Mary's Saturday.
Good, um, Lou?
I reported in the work session.
I like it, Greg?
Nothing.
Darren?
Nothing to report tonight?
Um, I was not at development meeting on Friday, uh, but there, I can report on it, and even the mayor could, there was some discussion about some more future M one zoning, uh, back on Far West Drive, right next to the current M one stuff, the Chug property, um, talking about some M one stuff there. There has, I'm trying to think, what was the other, there's one other thing. We talked about Hart, that, um, I've had some developers approach me about, um, some site plans and concepts on the piece behind Peterson's that we've seen a couple times prior.
Just, just adjacent, or just east, or west of the canal.
Just west of the, where's the canal?
It's right.
Yeah, yes, yeah, that's, that one that has the power lines through it.
Yeah, it's, it's just west of the canal.
Yep, so they're kind of going through some conceptual stuff and.
Region of primary access.
They're using both.
Yeah, nineteen hundred.
Eighteen.
No, two thousand, by the fire station.
Yes, yep.
That should be the primary entrance.
Uh, not, they'll just have two accesses.
That's up two, no, I understand that, but that should be their primary.
Well, we'll certainly discuss that, cause we discussed it on the last time.
Yeah, yeah, they're not even really that far, they're going through our mixed-use ordinance and things like that, and figuring out where the commercial would set best, and what kind of density they can get, and kind of a layout.
Any open space?
Well, I, I haven't seen anything, they just asked me about the mixed-use ordinance.
I know we had some parts planned back in there.
Yeah, and it's, it is literally just the first, you know, portion of it, it doesn't even go past that second piece. Yeah.
So, does it, does it go as far as the, you know, the stake center road?
It hits.
So that's the east, that's, that's the west boundary of it, right?
Yes, but then.
So that could be a second egress.
So, yeah, but it goes, you know how it goes, it goes out this way and then jogs?
Yeah.
Yeah, it includes part of that jog, yeah, so, so that's in the works, probably a ways away, but they have started asking questions.
Yeah, we had.
I think that's it.
Part of the master plan, we put together that stake center road, and then one through the slough as well.
They're gonna pay a little more attention to the utilities easements this time.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, and that will help the city too, there's, connecting all of that will be very nice, so. That's all I have to report, I think we're on top of everything, so. Anything else? Okay, motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Brandon, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We can go home now. Ooh, cool, well, that's cause everything got tabled or, or not moved. There you go, see? I was gonna say, it's cause you asked how.